Meeting room will come to order. We're now holding the February 10th, 2025, meeting of the Cumberland County Fiscal Court. At this time, I'll ask our magistrate from District Two to lead us in a word of prayer.
Let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we come humbly before you this day, Lord, thanking you for all the blessings that you've seen fit to bless us with, Lord. We're just so thankful that you've allowed us to come out here and gather together and do business on behalf of the citizens of Cumberland County, Lord. Lord, we're told in your word, if we want wisdom, we need to ask for it, Lord. And we ask that you would just give us wisdom, Lord, and give us the understanding and knowledge that we need to make decisions that would keep our county moving forward, Lord. Lord, we're just thankful for this great country we live in, Lord, and all those freedoms that we enjoy. We just pray, Father, that you would just watch over the servicemen and women that sometimes put their lives in harm's way to protect these freedoms, Lord, that you would just protect them from harm. Lord, we ask that you would just be with those who are sick, Lord, and ask that you would just touch them and heal them at the bigger will. We'll give you the praise for it all, Lord. Lord, be with those who are lost, pray that they return from sin before it's too late. Lord, Father, we ask that you just go with us through this meeting and the rest of the day, Lord, and when you're done with this here, that you would give us a home in heaven. These things we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, magistrate District Two. Do you want to join us in a pledge of the flag?
A pledge of the flag is to say the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, where we stand as one nation under God, and in your fiscal, with liberty, justice, for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Gentlemen, I'll now call the roll. This will also serve as a mic check. Remember, if the mics start to screech like they did, just shut it off and then turn it right back on. Magistrate District One?
Here.
Magistrate District Two?
Here.
Magistrate District Three?
Here.
Magistrate District Four?
Here.
County Attorney Coleman Hurt?
Here.
Thank you, gentlemen, very much. And a special welcome back to magistrate District Three. Cannot express to you how much we missed you and how glad we are to have you back. Certainly an asset to your district in this court. Welcome back here.
Thank you.
We'll move on now to the approval of the minutes. Letter D under general order. If anybody needs an agenda in the audience, if you would, raise your hand. We'll make sure that you get one. Gentlemen, those sets of minutes that were emailed over to you begin with January the 13th, 2025 meeting minutes. Those have been submitted. Is there a motion to approve those as submitted?
Motion.
So moved by magistrate District One. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by magistrate District Three. All those in favor, please signify with a same aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion passes. Next set of minutes, January the 15th, 2025. Is there a motion to approve those as submitted?
So moved.
So moved by magistrate District Three. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by magistrate District Four. All those in favor, please signify with a same aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion passes. Moving into letter E, departmental reports. We'll begin with road supervisor Ricky Melton.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening. We got the railing cribbing repaired. We had the hole in section four three. It's been repaired. I talked to Josh and he's supposed to send some pictures to me. I guess you've got those in that and everything. But we got a truck back that we had, we bought, got the cloud and spread it on. So it should be ready to go.
How does it look?
Looks good. Looks good. It does. Yeah. I'd like to take a minute of time just to recognize the magistrates, what it is. It's, I get a lot of calls, people calling, and wanting to know, can they do this and do that, work on the roads? And of course, they don't understand. They come in here from different places. We're glad they did. It's a good place to fish and hunt up. And so, but we're proud of them coming. But anyway, the magistrates have allotments that they work off of, their money. And if you need something, you know, you need to contact your magistrate. And if you don't know what district you live in, or whatever you call the road, each month, and if you're District One, Two, or Three, or Four, you know, it's, you know, a whole pimp. But they're, they make a road list, and then they give it to me. And I work off that road list, and we work together to get it done. And but as far as, you know, can you blacktop my road, or put in a tile and stuff like that, being rock, or fix the driveway, the bus turn arounds, you know, the magistrate is the ones to call and contact the judge. If you can't get help, somebody else. But your office is always open. Somebody here gets by cellphone. The magistrate's all about cellphones. But it don't bother me to call people. I just like for the public to know, you know, how that works.
I appreciate that, Ricky.
You know, the general public might not know that they have a lot of money to work off of, and they ask them here.
A very small amount of money, magistrate, that they stretch as far as they can.
I just want to add that in.
Appreciate that. Any questions for the road supervisor?
I just wondered about how it would go. And he called me, standing there. He was wanting any road. We just don't have the money to do that.
Right. Yep. And then people just don't understand, you know, how we work here. They're not used to a magistrate. They're used to just making one call, and they get their answer. And then my number's on the, I guess, if you're on the internet, it's a contact for Cumberland County. So, but it don't bother me 24/7, you know, anytime anybody calls, I'm glad they do. But I always try to refer them to the magistrate or the judge one.
I want to know if there's anybody else he could talk to besides me. I said, there sure are. I'm telling you, I'm telling you pretty much what he's supposed to do.
Yeah, he called me shortly thereafter.
Called to you.
Yeah.
One thing I want to say was that the repair over there on section four, the company took care of that. So that didn't cost the county taxpayers anything to get that fixed. I just want that to be known.
That's correct.
And he did, you know, get to it pretty, you know, shortly thereafter. He was working.
Appreciate you both making sure that that was done and done correctly. Any other questions from the road supervisor? Thank you very much, Ricky.
Good job, Ricky.
EM Director, Mr. Greg Carrier. In his place, Tyler Thacker, EM intern.
On February 6th, around 5:30 PM, the east side of the county was out of power due to a downburst of wind that hit in the area of the radio station on East Side. It broke three holes on the main feeder line that feeds all of East Nighty and the State Park area. And just to imagine, that winds up to 150 mile an hour in an area in just seconds. That is equivalent to anywhere from an EF0 to EF3 tornado wind speed. And just so there's enough fusion, there was enough rotation in this downburst of wind. All 935 of Tri-County's customers on the east side of the county was without power from around 5:50 PM to 11:30 PM. Tri-County had crews from Berksville, Tompkinsville, Slana, and two electrical contractors that assisted with getting the power back on. There was minor damage to some structures in the area, thankfully no one was injured. I want to give a big shout out to Tri-County and all those who helped restore the power back to our county in the nasty weather conditions. I'd also like to give another shout out to the county road department and the state road department for all the hard work they do to make sure all the roads are in good condition and clear for me to bring here storms.
Absolutely. Thank you, Tyler. Any questions for Tyler?
Thank you.
Very much. ABC Officer, Mr. Junior Smith.
Good afternoon. Monthly alcohol sales for December, 56,57124. Regulatory fees for December, $2,760.23. Year-to-date, $75,562.74.
Any questions for our ABC officer? Thank you very much, Junior.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Jailer, Thomas J. Brown.
I'll sit down. Don't turn it up. Thomas J. Brown, Columbus County Judge. January, we had a total of 40 runs, verdict three to a third, two to Bull, two to Taylor, one to Baltimore, one to Blasco, and one to Lexington, for a total of 2,908 miles. As of the first day of the month, there was 25 in Dare County. As of today, there are 29. In January, there was a total of 10 home incarceration for a total of 189 days. Saving the county approximately $6,800 in jail.
Any questions for our Jailer, Thomas J. Brown?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Thomas J.
Thank the judge and the fiscal court for keeping track with Dare County.
Appreciate your help with that, sir. Thank you. Berksville Mayor Laurel Irving, Sheriff King Williams.
It's good to see you, everyone.
Good evening.
I want the same quarter. There it is. For the month of January, we had 457 calls for services. A rather busy month. We had 77 traffic stops. We made 31 arrests, worked 19 vehicle accidents, and had 14 alcohol-related calls. Also like to say, we had a rather big theft occurring in the third district down on South Creek Road. There was a trailer that was stolen down there at about $50,000 worth of tools. And it was able to recover the trailer and some of those tools. And was also able to break some of the justice for that, so.
Appreciate that. Very, very much, Sheriff. Any questions for the sheriff? Thanks for what you do, Sheriff.
Thank you.
County Court Clerk Brian Morgan, PBA Gina Shay Watson, County Coroner Gary White, County Attorney Coleman Hurt?
Nothing to report, Judge.
Civics Club magistrate, the judge wasn't able to be with us. So our ranking member of the fiscal court for the civics club is Presley Fletcher. If you would, please come forward for the report.
Commodities in January, we served 220 people. We gave away over $11,000 in food value during our regular USTA commodity distribution, and then another $12,000 in food value for the fresh produce bonus distribution. I would like to especially thank all the volunteers and the county road department for all their help. We will also be going sometime in the next couple of months to tour KET Lexington headquarters and the board meeting with KET and Wollman in June. The civics club got some positive feedback from judges at the Kentucky Winner Judges Conference. They favored full comments for adult accounting initiatives, specifically the pioneering effects to form a civics club and establish an immersive internship program.
Any questions for our civics club magistrate, Presley Fletcher?
Here.
Thank you very much, Presley. I'd also like to make mention of this. While magistrate District One and I were at that conference in Lexington, we were very, very encouraged to hear the positive things, not just from one person in front of that group, but from multiple speakers. There were roughly 90-plus judges there, less than 100, but more than 90 judges, and over 300 magistrates. So that's a big room full of a lot of people from across the state. We had several folks come up to us afterward and ask, how do we do this in our county? The quote that I wrote down as soon as the KCO representative said it, and magistrate District One was next to me, I wanted to make sure that we got this quote right. Some of you will hear it again at the State of the County address. According to Rich Ornstein, and I don't think he would mind me saying his name, who's been with KCO for roughly two decades now, his comment about Cumberland County's civics club program and internship program was, "It's one of the coolest programs I've seen in the last 20 years in Kentucky." That, to me, is a pretty big deal. And were it not for the people in this room, and naturally, our youngest team members, this would have never been possible. So thanks to the members of the court for investing in it, all the members of the Cumberland County team, and those here with us today who have supported it, and naturally, the youth for making it possible. Well-earned recognition. Moving on to the tornado shelter under old business. Greg, if you would, could you please give us an update on where we are with the tornado shelters?
After the last court meeting, y'all gave me permission to reach out to an electrician to try to get what needed to be finished done. Well, I did. And we went over there last week, and one of the doors will not open. And we don't have everything according to Logan, the federal signal guy, and they put the informer in and the electrician. We don't have everything we're supposed to have. So I came back, and the judge made a, did a conference call, and actually talked with Mary with CNC. And she said somebody would send an email telling her what needed to be done, that they would get on it. So I called Logan. He actually sent the email, because I asked him to see, see the judge and myself in it. That way, we knew it went. And so, we got the email, so I'm sure they did too. And I tried to reach out, I've tried to reach out a couple of times, and I'm not getting an answer from them, so.
So, gentlemen, on that, what that means with tornado season coming up pretty quickly, we need that tornado shelter to be operational. We've got over $300,000 in that. It needs to work. We do need to be thinking, if this doesn't move forward, and they don't correct some of these mistakes, which, mind you, Greg has been on top of this since 20, what, 18?
16ish.
16. So this has been a long time coming. He's made tremendous amount of progress with Cumberland County team in the last 25 months. We don't want to let that momentum drop off while we're in just the last part of this. But we cannot operate that shelter with the current door mechanism. It's wrong. So until they get that fixed, we do not need, for liability reasons, Mr. County Attorney, to invite people to use that. And then that door worked the wrong way, and everybody's out. So as soon as we hear back from that, we'll let you know. I would tell you, I would like, at this point in time, for the court to take official action, saying that we will allow approximately 30 days until our next meeting, our March meeting. And if CNC does not act to fix the errors of the construction between now and then, at that point, we will revisit some type of stronger action. Is there a motion from the court to that effect?
Motion.
So moved by magistrate District Four. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by magistrate District Three. All those in favor, please signify with a same aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion passes.
Thank you very much, Greg, for all the work.
Letter B, FEMA update. I know magistrate District Three and I have talked about this at length, as well as the rest of us, but specifically magistrate District Three and I, we have rode several of District Three's roads. We'll be finishing those up in this month of February. Magistrate District Three and I have talked about quite a bit of his roads and passer play, kind of making the decision based on what we've seen. Do we want to move forward on those or not? Is that correct, magistrate District Three? So the rest of you, those of you that haven't finished riding the roads, that's step one. We've got to have that done by the end of this month. In addition to that, that's only half of that walk that we've got to take. The other part is to make sure that what we've turned into FEMA that looks like it is done, did we do what we said we were going to do on that project? Good example there. If we said we were going to use railing cribbing, and we got paid $100,000 for railing cribbing, did we use railing cribbing, or did we instead just put some rock in there that cost us $3,000? If that's the case, that's correct. So, gentlemen, any questions on that? If not, again, please try to have that done by the last day of February. I'll be sending that update to the state, and then, of course, to the federal level FEMA folks after that. Status update on discussion about the interlocal agreement regarding county prisoners. That will be the ongoing discussion between Cumberland County Fiscal Court, Cumberland County Attorney, Cumberland County Sheriff, and Cumberland County Jailer. At this time, we are working through putting some things on paper, so that at the next meeting, we'll have something to bring to you. Mr. Jailer, is that correct? Appreciate all of your work on that, as well as county attorney and county sheriff. Thank you all for coming together to make that positive difference. Bonus food distribution. Larry Anderson, co-assistant road supervisor, would you please come forward and mention a little more about what you and the road department did in order to make that bonus food distribution possible?
We were having regular commodities on January 29th, and we also got a load of produce. Six different items we had. So at first, we was going to divide it, do the regular commodities and then the produce. But we decided they got there so early. So we done the produce and commodities that everyone had got to start with. So ended up 220 giveaway. Then after that, we let them line up, and we give it away again about 11 o'clock. And we probably had another 200, I'm guessing, because we got rid of everything that we had.
Larry, from your perspective, I know you've been part of several of these now. Do you think it went well?
Yeah, I thought it went just like the tour. It was planned good, and it was given away. Didn't have a bit of trouble or anything. One time, there were probably 12 or 15 individuals on each side, because we was running two aisles. And then we had two hollers down here. What, how many they got? Then we looked for direct in traffic. So we probably had 25, 30 volunteers. And we want to make sure we thank them, because they were tremendous help to us.
You cannot do something like that without that team. It is not possible. So thank you very much, Larry, not just for what you all did on that day, but that whole week leading up to it. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, Larry.
Moving into new business. Gentlemen, this is where things start moving pretty quickly. A lot of this is pretty standard. You send all of this in your packet in advance. Budget transfers, that's the movement of money in the budget. You have those in front of you. Is there a motion to approve those?
Motion.
So moved by magistrate District One. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by magistrate District Two. All those in favor, please signify with a same aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion passes. Cash transfers, the actual movement of cash money. We have movement of money from the general fund to the jail fund in the amount of $30,000. Is there a motion to approve that?
So moved.
So moved by magistrate District Three. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by magistrate District Four. All those in favor, please signify with a same aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion passes. Moving into budget amendments. Budget amendments, this includes a $5,000 grant that we're going to be talking about a little later for weather radios. This is the second and final reading and vote on this. Is there a motion to approve that?
So moved.
So moved by magistrate District Three. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by magistrate District One. All those in favor, please signify with a same aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion passes. Moving into the warrants. Gentlemen, this is paying the bills. Is there a motion to pay the bills?
So moved.
So moved by magistrate District Two. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by magistrate District Four. All those in favor, please signify with a same aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion passes. At this time, I'll ask the Cumberland County Sheriff to come forward. Sheriff, we have in front of us the paperwork that you've submitted, the financials you've submitted. Is there anything that you'd like to bring to our attention there?
Nothing to bring to your attention. The excess fees that return our $27,551.22, and everything, questions out. Do it on.
We appreciate that very, very much. Gentlemen, you've had an opportunity to review that. Are there any questions for the sheriff to answer for us at this time?
Thank you.
If not, I'll entertain a motion to accept the budget as presented.
Motion.
So moved by magistrate District One. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by magistrate District Two. All those in favor, please signify with a same aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion passes. Thank you very much, Sheriff. Moving into letter F, EM truck repairs. EM Director, would you like to speak to this? We've got two estimates in front of us, gentlemen.
I went on a call, and actually, what happened was, I was back in a, into a driveway, and I was watching the mailbox in my mirror. And I knew I didn't hit the mailbox, because I was watching my mirror. But there was a signpost that the mailbox was on, and I could not see the signpost. And it actually deemed the doors. So that's.
And Greg came right to us to report that. So there wasn't any type of, well, I don't know if I tell this right. He was very forthcoming. Appreciate that, Greg. That is never an easy conversation when you've got to report some type of accident or damage. It's a few thousand dollars. What I am recommending to the court, we do have insurance, and the argument is, well, we have insurance for this reason. But I'm telling you, I fear if we turn this one into insurance instead of fixing this, we're going to have every piece of equipment we've got run up on our insurance premiums. So with that being said, in order, if it be the court's will that we don't turn it into insurance, and we just fix it based on those estimates you've got in front of you, we'll need a motion and a prevailing vote from the court to that effect. Is there a motion?
So moved.
So moved by magistrate District One. Second by magistrate District Two. All those in favor, please signify with a same aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion passes. Greg, thank you very much, sir. Moving into the potential surplus of county equipment. Magistrate District Three is the chairman of the road committee for the Cumberland County Fiscal Court. He's been in contact with me about recommendations from that committee about surplusing some equipment. Magistrate District Three, is it correct that you would like for us to surplus based on the committee's recommendation, two pickup trucks and a dump truck?
Yes.
Appreciate all of your work and the committee's work on making sure that we have the right items that we need to surplus there. If it be the will of the court in the form of a motion and a second, we can proceed. And I'll get those listed on GovDeals with all the appropriate VIN numbers that's been conveyed to the county treasurer. Is there a motion of that effect?
Motion.
So moved by magistrate, I'm sorry?
What truck?
Ricky, would you like to speak to that, to pickups?
Blue truck, Jersey. I just got the cage on the back. And the old dump truck, we couldn't ever get started this year. And then the truck that we financed up, I replaced it.
That broke down on us three times the last time we pushed that.
The old truck that Charles ran.
Yeah. Old junior truck.
Yeah. And Charles, magistrate District Four, Charles Ray, has said, if you have any problems with that, then you have to drive the truck if you don't want to surplus. Kidding. Any other questions, gentlemen? If not, is there a motion to surplus those? It was that motion District One. Seconded was that District Two. All those in favor, please signify with a same aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion passes. Gentlemen, very much. Letter H, this is simple notice. Gentlemen, all of you have the opportunity to submit budget priorities for the upcoming budget year. Our budget will take effect July 1. That budget will be prepared for a first reading in May, a second and final reading sometime in June. So if you have anything that needs to come before the budget committee, get it together and submit it by the March meeting. So that's just next month. Any questions on that, gentlemen? If not, yes, sir, Ricky?
Compliment to the trucks, sir.
Yes.
I'm like, I'm like, we're going to retire that truck that's out here, and we're not, we told you that, sort of, kind of looking.
That's good.
Retire it, put it back on the road. Actually, that truck and your truck that.
Yeah. For those online watching later, road supervisor had made mention for the record, and if you would reflect this in the meeting minutes, that we are keeping the white pickup that was damaged by hitting the deer. And instead, the insurance proceeds to fix that truck, since it's a newer truck, lower miles, better operating truck, we're surplusing the blue truck to get rid of it. So we'll still have necessary vehicles that we need. Thank you very much, Ricky. Moving down to the next item of business, judge executive nominations for court approval. We have one nomination to the Lake Cumberland Housing Agency Board. This is coming from District Three. I'm nominating Craig Smith. He is a real estate professional in Cumberland County to that board. The term will begin in May 2025 and will expire after three years on May 2028. Is there a motion to accept that nominee?
Motion.
So moved by magistrate District Three. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by magistrate District One. All those in favor, please signify with a same aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion passes. Appreciate Craig Smith's willingness to serve in that capacity. Letter J, District Two request, Burchett Cemetery Road. District Two magistrate and I have been in contact on that road. Gentlemen, this is the notice to the entire court. What we need to do for the upcoming meeting, especially with Memorial Day fast approaching, any of these cemetery roads that our county road supervisor has been gracious enough to put together, pile that list, and then give it to you, if you have any of those roads, no, let me back that up, check every single one of those roads. And if it's not on your county road list, we need to take action at the next meeting to remedy that. So all of the roads that are on your county road list, if you don't also have those cemetery roads on there, and that they need to be, if they're not private cemetery roads, and you believe that they are county roads, we need to make sure that they are officially in the county road system. So at the next meeting, I'll be asking for a list from each one of you to adopt in, kind of as a cleanup bill there, any of those roads that otherwise would not be recognized that need to be, so that if the state is in riding our road, we've got a full and complete list. Do we have any questions on that, gentlemen? If not, we'll move on to letter K. Interlocal agreement. Gentlemen, you have in your packets the email from Mayor Irving, as well as the original version of the 911 board interlocal agreement, and the amended version from just this most recent year of the interlocal agreement. You'll recall, the amended version only changed the funding mechanism. That's all that it changed. It did not address anything else. That was all to be determined, to be discussed. The points that the mayor has outlined in her email to us, if you have The points that the mayor has outlined in her email to us, if you have questions, I know you'll be happy to address those. We've talked about it here in the court meetings previously, on some things that we'd like to see. Are there any comments, or questions, or discussion on the interlocal agreement between the county and city?
Judge, you know, we've had a lot of sickness and everything, and I'm not sure we've all got a chance to look over this, and, and as much as we really need to, and I'd like to move that we table this.
I, I think that's absolutely appropriate. Is there a second to that motion?
Sir.
Seconded by the magistrate District Three, all those in favor, please signify with saying aye. All opposed, no. Motion passes. So gentlemen, with that, you've got all of that information still in front of you. Please take the next thirty days to review that. If you have things that you'd like added to the discussion, I'd like to reach out to the mayor, see if we could have a discussion with her, if I could have a discussion with her on behalf of the court, on some of her proposes, proposals, as well as ours. Just send me anything that you'd like added in that discussion, so that we can make sure that we have all of our information that we want to her by her next meeting as well. Letter L, under new business, OSHA, Kentucky OSHA, they conducted their site visit, part one. They conducted the part one of that. Part two is upcoming. I had to ask if we could reschedule that due to a recent death. They're very, very good to work with. When they come in, they'll be providing us with a full report, the same way that the team from part one has. So if you know of anything that we need to correct, it would be good to correct that before part two comes in. It would look better if we're proactive instead of reactive there. Appreciate the road department for taking everything from part one. We're still working on some of that to correct, but we'll have all of that resolved before the part-two team comes down to visit with us. Any questions there, gentlemen?
Judge, we still have some other things.
Correct. And we've got some other things that are on order, too. Very good. Thank you, Ricky. Moving into, or on to letter M, weather radio distribution. The budget amendment that you all passed just a few moments ago allows us to accept in five thousand dollars, and then expend out five thousand dollars in TBA grant money for people at Cumberland County to need weather radios before the tornado season starts. Gentlemen, I need your help. Anybody who does not have a weather radio, that needs a weather radio, needs to pay attention to that upcoming distribution. We'll have that in the newspaper, we'll have it on WKWR. If WKWR will allow me, I'll come over, the EM director or EM intern will come over and discuss that distribution to get all of that news out. Part two of what I need your help on here. If people came and got weather radios when we had the potential failure of Wolf Creek Dam, if they came to get those weather radios, and they've had it now for over a decade, and they've never used it, please encourage them to think twice about coming to get another one that they'll also never use. If it's somebody that you know did not get one, but will rely heavily on one, encourage them to come get it. We need these to be given to the most vulnerable population and those who will use them. So please help us get the word out about that. I will tell you, and for those watching later, just to eliminate this potential concern, if any of you all as magistrates get phone calls or texts saying, magistrate District One, magistrate District Four, two or three, would you please, while you're over there, pick me up a weather radio? No, it does not work that way. If it worked that way, you would all drive your pickup trucks, and we'd have all of them loaded, and we wouldn't have any to give out. So that cannot work. Folks will have to show up on-site, same way that we've handled the toy distribution, the bonus food distribution. They will need to show proof of residence in order to benefit from those local funds. Any questions on that?
Sir.
Yes, sir.
Time frame when this is gonna happen, is it gonna, hopefully it'll happen before tornado season gets in full swing.
Right. So the idea there will be that now that we've got this budget in, because we couldn't advertise it until we had it budgeted in, so now that we've got those funds, we'll be releasing to the newspaper and to WKWR that upcoming date. What I expect that we'll have will be, at the USDA commodity food distribution at the end of this month, will be a prime time where there's a lot of people that might be able to benefit from that, kind of capturing some of those. Now, what we may do, the bonus food distribution went over as well as it did, if logistically there are no problems with it, we will probably finish the USDA commodity food distribution that morning, and hand out weather radios to anybody there that benefits, but then keep in reserves enough others where, I'm making this up, don't hang your hat on this, but say nine-thirty, ten o'clock, the general public can also come through to get, say, the other half of those radios, because they will not last for everybody. We will run out. And I, I don't want it to, to be that we're advantaging or disadvantaging any one demographic. Good question. Other questions? Greg, yes, sir.
With the timeframe and question, tomorrow, I'll reach out to the guy that gave me the quote, and tell him that we need an invoice, and then we can order.
Very good. Other questions on weather radios? Letter N, State of the County Address. I hope that everybody who's here, which shows that you're incredibly involved and active in, in county government, I hope you will show up on February the eighteenth, February the eighteenth, down at the Cumberland County Vets Memorial Center, the senior center, as it's often called, four fifteen Central Time is when we will start. That will be the State of the County Address. We're gonna hear a lot of information down there about things that are moving forward, how changes that have been made at this table affect you and your friends and your neighbors, people you go to church with, people you work with. Are we trending in the right direction? Are we moving faster here or slower there? You'll hear all of that down at the State of the County Address, February the eighteenth, four fifteen PM. If we have snow or some type of natural or national disaster, and we cannot meet on that day, our snow date or alternate date is February the twenty-fifth, that's one week later, four fifteen PM, same location. Gentlemen, any questions on that? If not, moving into letter O, our final listed item of new business, county staff and personnel, this is something I wanted to give you notice of. The ladies were not able to be with us at this meeting, they will be joining us for the March meeting. Judy Watson Wise is the lady that cleans for us here in the courthouse, and does a phenomenal job. She works in ten hours a week to clean what frankly I think would take most people thirty to forty hours a week to clean for the job that she does on it. Please, if you see her, encourage her and tell her what a good job she's doing, if you believe that she is, and I do. She has a medical procedure coming up, and I don't want to share any more than would be appropriate, but she has a medical procedure coming up, and she's asking that at the March meeting, you all consider allowing her daughter to fill in for her for a few hours if her hip or knee or shoulder won't allow her to put in that full ten hours, if you would allow her daughter to pick up another two hours there, not in addition to the ten, but still maintaining ten hours total, just if she can only do eight without giving out, she's got that extra help at two. Any questions on that? If not, expect those two ladies to be at our March meeting, and then a vote one way or the other on that. Gentlemen, do any of you know of any new business which should properly come before this meeting at this time? If not, yes, Ricky? Yes, so we were, for those watching online, road supervisor asked about salt. There are judges all across Kentucky who are struggling with their salt orders right now. Because of everything that's happened in the South, when you get a place like Florida that gets several inches of snow, you've got a salt shortage across the state. It wasn't just the southeast that got hit, the northern block got hit, the central block got hit, everybody is pushing for snow right now. We've had to call more than just Compass to try to get salt this year, because everybody is stretched in, and even those that have been told, well, we'll, we'll get it to you next week, they still not got it as of last week, when I asked them about it. So good question on that. We'll have to do what we have to do when it comes to a winter like we've had this winter.
How much more we got left?
We probably got sixteen, seventeen hundred.
We can handle a pretty decent snow, though.
But not five of them. Certainly working on that, and Ricky appreciates you keeping a watch on it to let us know when we're in need of it. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn until our next regularly scheduled meeting. Yes, yes.
On the warrants.
On the warrants, yes. Eugene, if you would, as finance officer, make that correction.
Okay, I'm sorry. Today, we received a credit on our advanced auto in the road fund for a hundred and ninety-five dollars and seventy-five cents, which will decrease the bill, the advanced auto bill to two hundred and forty-three dollars and ninety-two cents.
And gentlemen, for good measure, you've already approved the warrants at a higher rate, which is okay, but we can pay out that maximum amount as it's less, it's good. But just for good order, we want to make sure that if the auditors watch this, or the auditors read the minutes later, we want to make sure that they know we're doing absolutely everything right in Cumberland County that we know to do.